On this computer.
Okay.
So I sent out that hint. Right?
Yeah.
I did an announcement that covered this. I thought now I've got it covered. Right? So apparently that didn't do the job.
So, so you're saying that the coding strand is the sense strand and then the opposite of that, which was the template strand would be the.
That's the anti sense strand.
Okay.
You, 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 the reason this exercise is supposed to like make you do that little bit of mental gymnastics to realize when I say. Didn't you, did that?
Oh, oh, sorry. I'm so sorry.
So, uh, let me just ask you about that hint, that hint, just like totally vain. That in the announcement, because in class, some people thanked me for posting.
So what do you mean by sense? So what do you, I guess what I was confused about by the thing is you said keep following a coding strand and turn it to RNA. When I thought when you trans. When you. Transcribe something, right, transferring.
I just said turn into RNA. It's the coding strand, that's gonna be the strand of the RNA. I've said that so many times.
I, but you don't, but the thing doesn't, but there. But it's the template that it follows. The template strand or the.
Including things that don't even matter. When you say the coding strand, you know, that's the strand that's gonna reflect it in this, in the same sequence in the RNA. That's what the coding strand means. So if you say this is the coding strand. Then the RNA is gonna be just read that five prime to three prime this. Read it in a sense of copy it base by base and change all the Ts to U's. Then you've got the RNA strand. If this is the coding strand and you turn it around, you go that way on the string. You go five prime to three prime, every time, eh, every time you do it, there's only two, two ways you can do it. You can do the top strand and the bottom strand. You just gotta go five round to three prime and call that RNA and change the. Use. Uh, I keep saying that in various ways.
Okay, so if you don't know, like you said in cla- like, I mean, like you said in the answer that you don't know which one.
If you don't know which one. You can't, you, you don't know which.
You just go, but it doesn't matter. You say it goes from five, five to three.
Are you saying if you don't know what you're coding, like if you're not told?
Just going five rounds, three prime is not enough. You have to know which is the coding strand and then you pick that strand and go five round to three.
Otherwise you get things like cancer, like things just copying itself.
So you actually, so when you, when I look at this, then I'm looking at, I'm looking at the bottom and I, the only thing I change is the. The Ts to the, uh, Ts to use, right?
Yep, she's looking at the bottom from five prime to three.
Yes, yeah, bottom here, five prime to three prime.
But that's what the hint says. The hint just lays, just says, okay, I give up. This is what you do.
Okay, but the thing is, is when I thought the template strand is what is actually being followed, not the.
The, the template trend is what's being followed, quote unquote, by the enzyme. The enzyme's only looking at that. But it's going five prime to three prime on that. So look what happens. Let's just take the, 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 let this what called easy case where, eh, where we'll call this the coding strength. We'll label this the coding screen. So now then this is the template strand. So. This is what the RNA polymerase will follow. So it will be down here, totally ignoring that strand up there. Like, it's only looking, see it.
I actually have a question. Yeah, so that's why I thought we would follow the template strand.
Okay, look what happens if you do that. Wait before you ask.
Can we add, can we add letters?
Yes.
Okay.
So let's say the DNA, it's fact, we've got it, eh, letters to do this. Now let me know this is a template strand. Let me move this.
So is that the small.
Let's say this is T. You're thinking of ribosomes.
Yeah.
Isn't that ribosome, this RNA polymerase. RNA. Oh, that's what this is. R N A, oh, it is not a ribosome.
Can we do GTC?
Okay, wait, we're gonna complete this without getting distracted. We're going to go through this process. I'm putting actual. Faces down here.
So GTC.
T C.
A.
A.
G.
T.
No.
C. G. Okay, that's.
Yeah, that's enough. That's all I've.
Okay, now what is the RNA that's gonna come off of there?
Well, you gotta start five prime.
Huh?
So it'd be G.
No, no, you, you're going in the five prime, three prime direction when you make RNA.
So we're gonna have, we're gonna, on the top, on the top, on the coding strand.
The thing, this is the problem about being able to just put the rules together and come out with the answer, but.
So the coding strand is gonna have C, because there's still gonna be.
First of all, it's gonna have a C.
But the coding strand will also have a C.
Coding, exactly why I want to see. Then it's gonna have a U.
That's gonna have an A, the co- the R. Yeah, right there.
It's gonna have the A here, which is what this is gonna have.
Yeah, T goes.
It's gonna have a T here, which is what this is gonna have. And it's gonna have a U here where this is gonna have a T.
Yes, hold on, let me just raise that.
So why does that T have an A? When it should be a U because T goes to.
This, this T and A are a pair. See, this has to be complementary to this. And this has to be the same as this, but they changed the Ts to U's, so that's what I've done. I was under the impression.
Yes.
People like that hint because it opened the whole thing up to there.
Okay, so now that we have, yeah, opened it up to me, but the thing is, is it still took, it was just, it just, I feel like it just was conflicting a little bit. Because so now that we know that and we know that RNA polymerase is on the, on the, on the template strand, that bottom one.
Yeah.
And we follow it.
Yeah, and what you're generating, just by complementarity is like, you're, you're using the complimentary. Base in every case, except you change the Ts to U. So the complimentary base to an A would be a T, to make it a U.
So really what we could do is we could follow the bottom strand, five prime to three prime, so that G. That, the G at the five prime end.
You mean in, in the exercise?
No, I'm doing it off this right.
Off of this, so.
So that G would become a C, that would be the RNA now.
C now, you're talking about.
Bottom strand, five prime, three prime. So now what we're doing is this. So this is the RNA that will be purple. So here we're having, it's gonna follow this way. The RNA polymerase is gonna go that way, right?
No, it's making, it's making the RNA right here.
So why, but it's going from three prime to five?
Yeah, that's the way it works. It goes, it's just.
You just told me it goes five prime and three prime with this.
What?
You just told me it goes five prime and three prime with this.
The RNA goes five prime to three prime.
Yeah, that's what we're asking about, sorry.
Look. There's a five prime right there.
Yeah.
It's following this, because it goes.
Oh, because it needs to go opposite.
Yeah.
So you're saying that the, you're saying that the RNA polymerase, when it's on the DNA strand. Goes three prime to five prime, but it generates a five prime to three prime.
Exactly, exactly.
There we go. Okay.
Now, how many times have I told you that everything is extends from the three prime end? How many millions of times have I said everything extends from the three prime end? That's what it's doing here. It's, here's, here's. Eh, eh, this is, this is, this thing's three prime end right now at this moment. That's three prime end. It's, that's just gonna extend.
Okay, so. But we did that. That makes sense. Okay, so you're saying that this is the template strand, so we would go here, three prime to five prime. And it would generate a five prime to three prime.
Yeah.
This is, yeah, I see what you're saying now. So we start here and go this way.
You know, did you notice? Do you remember what I said? Do you remember what I said in the hint that you could do if it follows fail? What was it?
Is to follow the coding strand.
Turn it around.
Oh, yeah.
If that made it.
But all the ones should be upside down. That's what you said.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we weren't necessarily wrong about it, about it following the temp- I wasn't necessarily.
No, that was wrong. That was just unnecessary information. Once you're told the coding strand, you can take it from there. Just, just start reading it. From, and read that from, it's five prime to three prime, because that's the same way it's gonna be in the, in the RNA.
Okay, that makes sense. So.
So I'm just, you know, uh, let me finish reading this. Oh, wait, we're, we're getting.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's just stick to the topic.
About translocation, so that's what I emailed you about that I still don't.
This is in the ribosome translocation, not in the chromosome. There's two kinds of translocation, which should have nothing to do with each other.
That I'm more of a person that thought I was.
Wait, you remember trans- reciprocal, transitive, balance, translocations in chromosomes where you get the.
Yeah.
Team cross?
Yeah.
That's one kind of translocation. So when you said translocation, it could be that, or it could be.
Yeah.
In the, in the ribosome. Okay, alright.
So, this is why I emailed you. So transfer RNA with an amino acid goes into a site of the ribosome.
Yeah.
The polypeptide, then to the A site of the ribosome, the polypeptide chain attached to. The P site goes on to the A site and then the A site go, the P site goes into the E site, A site goes to P site. E site exits, P site waits for the next charge transfer RNA.
Yeah.
To bring in the next amino acid, then that whole polypeptide chain bounces on to that amino acid, waits for P to go to E.
Okay, wait, wait, wait. Uh, I'm not sure about the step you had there. You gotta realize that. For a moment in time. You've got something on the A site and something on the P site. And in that moment, that I'm thinking of. You, the polypeptide is on the P site.
Yeah, but it's gonna transfer to the A.
Let me turn it this way, this is the way you're, this thing, so. So, um, yeah, forget about the E site, that'll take care of itself. You got this, right now you got, so here's your RNA. And the ribosome is here, and then right here on the B site, let's pretend this P is a. And then here's this thing, but it's transfer RNA, and it's one. Amino acid. Then what's gonna happen is this is gonna break and it's gonna go over to there.
Yeah.
This is gonna break and it's gonna come over here.
Yeah.
This one without the chain is gonna come over here, it's gonna exit A, it's gonna come to P, leave the next one to come there.
Yeah, so where is it coming?
This, that, I get, but here we've got the DNA which this would be the. This would be the three prime and then it would be the five prime.
No, it's other way around. Because this thing is advancing in that direction, it's going in that direction, so it'll get closer to. Yeah.
Like, form itself along that. So then. These right here are the codons.
Yeah.
And these on here are the antico-dons.
Yeah.
And out here we have transfer RNA that's grabbing on to the amino acid.
Yeah.
And then it's waiting, it's waiting its turn.
Yeah.
For an antico-don to be complementary to this codon.
Well.
So then it can come into it.
Yeah, well, actually, what you have, it'll be, it'll be this next codon in line that one goes to.
Okay.
It hasn't gotten in there yet.
Okay, so they're already on the DNA, they're just waiting to get to the sites.
The codon, the codon is, is, all I mean is the codon is here, and the error just means that when this codon, by translocation, reaches the A site. Then this thing will bond right there. Not before.
Yeah, alright. And then.
So what was, where was it? Was there a binding on the translocation?
I wasn't understanding. How, I'm sort of confused about the, like, the vocab, codon and antico-don, how it was propelling itself across the DNA. And I wanted to make sure that I understood correctly that the chain was breaking and going to the A and then coming over.
Yeah, the very, the transfer, this thing right here.
Goes there, yeah.
Here, it attaches to that and then adds this amino acid to it. And then the whole thing jacks over. It's like you take all this like a tablecloth with all the dishes on it and you just pull it like that. And then advances this thing and everything.
You mean you're going.
Yeah, but the ribosome is going this way. And the.
DNA.
The, the RNA is going that. Either way you wanna look at it.
So would you say that the ribosome is going five to three, five prime to three prime?
Yeah. Just always, always remember, there's certain little things that you just remember them. It's the key to everything. Ribosome is always getting closer to the three prime end. If you say it that way, you don't need anything that the ribosome is moving. All by itself, or the mRNA is moving all by itself, sometimes the ribosome is actually attached to the rough ER or something. Just think, the ribosome is always getting closer to the three prime end.
Okay.
That's one of those rules.
How I think of it.
Is that the coding strand always looks just like the messenger, like the RNA.
How I think of it is, um, it's like a ticket machine. You know, you put the tickets in the machine and it beats it.
Yeah.
That's what, that's how I think of it.
Okay.
You should use that. You should put like, next time you teach the class, you should put, um, like a picture of like a ticket machine or Chuck E. Cheese.
Which kind of ticket machine are you talking about?
You know, like, have you ever fed, you have, you were like, when you like go to an arcade and you get, and play all the games, you get like a thing of tickets. And then you put your tickets into the arcade machine and it counts how many tickets you have, and then it gives you a receipt, and you can go buy prizes with the receipt.
This just doesn't sound too much like, if that works for you, that's.
So, I'm a little confused about the clo- the structure of transfer RNA.
The cloverly.
Cloverly.
Yeah.
Confused on what it is.
Okay, well, uh, it's like the first step, you might call it, it's not actually the first, but, yeah, it's the first, if you stopped. Okay, let's start here. A transfer RNA is a single piece of RNA, right? Like a single strand of RNA.
But I think transfer RNA, I think of that thing written up there in blue that I have.
Yeah, but that's what I'm telling you.
Yeah.
It's very much like a protein is a single strand of amino acids. Which folds up. Are you, are you very sleepy?
Um, there's some fire alarms went off in my house all night long and we couldn't get them to shut off no matter what we did, so, yeah.
Fire alarm?
Uh, yeah, my. Yeah.
Okay, alright. Anyway, yeah, you look like you're about to drift off there. Okay, um. So we're talking about a polymer, a single strand, not a double strand of RNA. That's, that's the fundamental. Uh, the, the structure of the transfer RNA, but it folds all up. And the first part of folding up is itself complementary, so it can fold around on. In places where it can make complementary base pairs between itself and itself, just like two strands on a double nucleic DNA. And that's the first level of it folding up, and that's what gives you the cloverly. It comes down. Then, puts out like these little loops and then forms all these. All these base pairs right there, and then it looks again, forms all these base pairs. And then somewhere here, does it again, it comes up here and does it right here.
Those are all hydrogen bonds.
Yeah, those are all, just, just like.
And then you have three prime and five prime, three primes.
Yeah, you have a three prime and sticks out.
Well, no, I thought the three, can it be interchangeable?
What do you mean? Interchangeable.
So the three prime end is always the longer one?
Yeah, that's the longer one. That's where the amino acid attaches, uh, in, in the end of that.
So this is the same as in the translocation.
Yeah, yeah, because I'm not done with it. I'm just telling you the clover, that's the cloverly, but after the cloverly. Forms. Like this, then this thing is still flexible, because those, these thin lip arms here, it just. Like wrap around itself like that. And they do it, and that's, that's like all kinds of little, little VanderWells attractions and stuff, and it's just flapping out there and then it wraps around in a certain way. And then it makes it more like cylindrical, long sort of a bar kind of thing. And that's where you get the actual three dimensional structure that folded transfer RNA.
So the cloverly, the cloverly structure of transfer RNA, it's a baby transfer RNA. It's like a baby RNA before it gets folded up.
Well, yes, it's, it's an incompletely folded.
So it's, it's just an incompletely folded art of.
Yeah, that's just, it's like you took it and you, and you unwrapped its arms and everything and laid it out on it, on it. Flat, flat place and then you pressed it flat.
Because it will eventually wrap itself up and resemble that card to a picture of the uncharged transfer RNA to bring the.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Where there's a little string coming out. That's the little string. It, it looks like it's a bent firecracker with a little wig sticking out there and it's, that's just a diagram. For the RNA.
Is that the antico-don loop?
The antico-don is actually this part down here.
Yeah, I know that, but what is an antico-don?
You drew that wrong.
Why, could I put four?
Yep. I mean, no, there's technically more, right?
What?
No.
No, there's three of them that matter. I've got the flag, I was gonna go around, it's all, it's all.
Yeah, well, yeah, so there's, there's technically more, but we're only focusing on three of them.
Yeah, yeah, I think trash that.
Three of them that form the antico-don.
So, what is the, oh, oh, wait, wait, so that is the antico-don.
Yeah.
But we're only worried about the three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those are the antico-dons that are gonna complementary.
Exactly, they're gonna. Match up to the codon.
Okay, I think I get it.
And, and actually, it's gonna be going the opposite five prime, three, three, prime direction, so that these are, and they, and they parallel down here.
Um, is the E, so is the, you know how we said ape, A P E?
You what?
You know how there's, um, inside a transfer RNA? Inside of a TR, TRNA.
What, what is inside of?
The A P E regions.
No, that's in the ribosome.
Oh, sorry, in the ribosome, yeah, sorry. No, in the ribosome, there's a, there's an A P E and, um. What is the A, does the A start at the three prime end?
The A site is always in the ribosome, even if there wasn't any messenger RNA in there, there'd be an A site, P site.
Yeah, but like, okay, but so the R, okay, so really, really the question should be phrased. Um, the ribosome that has the, that has the, you know, so you have the ribosome, here's the, here's the A P E.
Yeah.
The, the RNA gets fed through the five prime, so is it, so. I guess a better way of saying it would be, is the A, is, is that kinda like the leading part, leading towards the?
Yeah, the A is leading. Sure, the A is closer to the three prime end than the E is.
Okay, so, so it's, so it's getting fed through from, yeah, and then the A's, and so, so it really goes EPA.
EPA, if you have a five.
Well, the first is.
You go into the A and then you go to E.
If there's a code down here, moving along, moving on, like patiently waiting in line here to get to the ribosome. It's going this direction and the first thing it hits is the A.
And then it goes, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Anna, please exit.
Yeah.
Um, the E ends up kinda like, what's the point of the E site? Can the P just exit?
Well.
I mean, what's the point of booting it?
Yeah, that, once, I see your question, it's like, if it just leaves, why, why the, I was psyched for it to not be there.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, I, I, I'm not gonna ask you dumb question like that.
And that's a great question, we tried.
Um, okay, so I have a question.
I mean, I, it's, I, it would be a bad question, question to, to use, it would be dumb as it is.
You know what you could do? You could give extra bonus points on the quiz, I mean, on the exam and ask random questions like that. And then whoever like gives the most reasonable explanation, they get the bonus points, you know?
Loved the question about what, what answer did you prepare that wasn't asked? Like, I think every teacher should use that. That's the best thing I've ever. You had a question on your first exam that said, what is something that you prepared for this exam?
Yeah, I think that's a good one.
That was like, really good.
Well, I figured there's always something that people say, I.
Yeah, and you don't.
To get this, and then you didn't even ask any questions about.
And for the exam too, that's what I was saying, like, you should have asked that question, there's so much more material that you, that you didn't put on the.
Well, I, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna say, every question just blank, like, write your own question and write your answer.
Yeah, what's that idea? What did I have for lunch today? Okay, next question. So you said in the notes that mitochondria do not recombine every generation. But can they recombine?
Combine, that's right, I did say they don't do it every generation, but I, I meant that in a different way. I didn't mean that that means that they do it sometimes.
They don't recombine.
Well. See, this is one of the difficult things where everything in biology has some exceptions. So, but what I meant by that was, they don't recombine and the rest of that sentence would have been like it, that, like it happens in the nucleus.
So, but at our level, they don't recombine.
Yeah, they don't recombine, uh, the way they do it in the nucleus, in, in fact. They, they, they do actually recombine with the ones from the father in very, very, very inconscious, but you should, like, forget I said it.
Okay, I gotcha. So we say that mitochondria transmission is non-medelian. But then, but then it's one of the three patterns of transmission of.
Well, okay, and, and I can explain that.
Okay.
The, what is one of the three patterns of tr- transmission is the possible, the, the, it's certain. Conditions that a ribosome can have. Are not due to the genes that are in the ribosome, but due to the genes that are in the nucleus. Because remember the nucleus does a whole lot of things, makes a whole lot of proteins for the ribosome. So if there's a, the ribosome used to make for itself, but now the nucleus makes them.
But we're talking about mitochondria.
Hmm?
We're talking about mitochondria.
Say what?
I'm confused. So you said that the mitochondria are not medelian, but then you have another thing that says that.
Okay, look, I, I, I gotta do the whole thing here then. Mitochondrial transmission is not medelian, and the genome of the mitochondria. Is not medelian, because it only comes from the mitochondria from the mother. You get exactly whatever your mother had, and that's all you get. And then that.
I get what you're saying, but then we have this, and it says, this is why I copied off the three possible transmission patterns.
Okay, those are transmission patterns of traits. So you can have a trait, and I think you should just let me finish this, this thing that I was making. I was explaining, because you gotta start somewhere. Eh, the. There are a lot of conditions that can go wrong with mitochondria. That don't originate in their own genome, because their own genome is very small and, and the other, rest of the proteins that it takes to make a mitochondria. Come from the nucleus, the genes in the nucleus. So if a gene's in the nucleus, that means it just goes in a regular medelian pr- pattern of transmission. The three to one rate phenotypic ratio and all that, or into two to one genotypic ratio, it's just like that. If it's a one gene, two allele condition. But it's coded in the, in the, uh, nucleus, but it affects the mitochondria. Because it's for the mitochondria, so it could be made by the normal mechanism using the. Cells own, uh, ribosomes and in its own cytoplasm. Not even completely bypassing the, the mitochondria, but it's for the mitochondria. So that trait, if it, it, it's coded in the nucleus, it's gonna have a medelian transmission pattern. It's as simple as that. If it's coded in the nucleus, but it acts on the mitochondria, it's still gonna have a medelian transmission pattern. Like any other nuclear gene.
No.
So that list of three, that's, how, how many types of transmission patterns can you have? For things that are affecting the mitochondria. Not, if it's, if it's, how many transmissions can you have, patterns can you have for mitochondrial genes? There's only one. And that is mother to child. But if it's how many transmission patterns can you have for traits of the mitochondria? There's three, if you count, like, no transmission at all, that should be one of the three.
Yep.
So there's, there's medelian transmission, oh, it behaves just like a gene of the nucleus. Or there's mi- mi- mitochondrial transmission, which means, oh, it just travels where the mitochondria and goes from mother to child. Or there's no transmission because it's not even germline.
No. The mitochondria are semi-autonomous, auto.
Semi-autonomous, yeah.
So I thought they weren't coded for, I thought they could only replicate themselves.
They can, but it doesn't mean they have, it's like you're, remember my, my analogy is a poodle. Can't take care of itself, you gotta put a little warm jacket on it when you take it outside, it's completely dependent on humans. But humans can't make another poodle if their poodle dies. Only a poodle can make a poodle. Only a mitochondria can make a mitochondria, right? Am I right?
We have.
That's, that's a good analogy.
Cater to it.
What?
We have to cater to it.
Yeah, we take care of it, except it still does some things for itself. We don't have to spoon the food into its mouth and eat.
So, we used something about, um, before we got into this conversation, we said something about, um, recombination.
Yeah.
But what did you guys say then?
Is, uh, were we ignoring her?
Oh, no, she, she's on, she's on her phone. She, she was getting a phone call.
Okay. I had my back turned sort of there, because I was talking to you good.
Mitochondria do not recombine. They, they, um, it's just like the crossing over doesn't affect mitochondria.
They don't have myosis at all, they're just little bacteria in there.
Okay, so.
Don't know anything about myosis.
Okay, so.
I found this to be very interesting.
Oh, I think, did you copy it during the lecture? Or is it on the hand?
I took a picture of it.
Did you have any questions?
Oh, okay, yeah.
He was asking.
Yeah, that's very good. Yeah, that's very good.
That you saw a mother with like, little to know mitochondria, she's saying that she could have a child with like completely fine genome type.
Yeah, yeah.
Extremely.
Yeah, we, we, we might, we might, later on, maybe it might be a routine thing to, to get the best, best mitochondria you can find.
You know what else is super interesting about mitochondria? The more you work out, the more you have, so the more active a mother is, the more mitochondria she'll pass on to her child. So like, being active while pregnant and before pregnancy is like, actually super important, people don't realize it.
Yeah, I didn't know that, is that really true, that a mother by exercising more?
Yeah.
Puts more mitochondria in her exome?
Yeah, so like, the more mitochondria the more you work out or whatever, the more mitochondria you need, obviously, so the more that are passed on.
Yeah, but, yeah, but I just wonder if that translates into the germline.
That's what I was told in my um, anatomy and physiology class.
Really?
Yeah, I thought it was super interesting.
Now I'm gonna have to check that out, I never heard of it, could be true, but I don't, just, let me check it out.
Okay, next question. Your genetic regulation in your periods?
Yeah, all that stuff, everything.
Hold on.
Sure, yeah, you can.
I mean, I was just.
I do, I do have a question though.
So the place, yeah, you got a question?
Um, yeah. So you know how we talked about, um, oh wait, never mind, I, I solved it in my head.
So you want, you wanna go over the whole genetic regulation thing? I mean, I could just sort of make up.
Here, we could just go.
Yeah.
Based on that.
Well, the, the, the central, central focal point is to start with the promoter, right?
Uh huh.
Promoter is where the, sort of the final decision crystallizes, like, we're gonna transcribe this gene. If you don't transcribe the gene, you haven't turned it on, so the regulation that's first, furthest, which, transcribe the gene. Otherwise, you don't get the product of the gene, so, so it all comes down to the promoter, you mean, so. And then the next thing to look at would be, how does the RNA polymerase pick one gene out of all the thousands that you're gonna be transcribing, and transcribe that? Or not, when is it not transcribed, genes, so, then that, that's where it just gets a little more complicated. Uh, for start, you got all these transcription factors. And they enable the the RNA polymerase to, to bind to the one that it should be bound to, at that time and place, and conditions. And transcribe that gene.
Transcription factors regulate genes in only two ways, they direct effects on the transcription complex, or spreading effects on the chromatin.
Yeah.
Chem.
Yeah. This is general breakdown. Um, so that, so that brings us to the transcription factors, which changes proteins that can bind to DNA or to other proteins. And um, and can, sorry, I'm laughing, that's something.
I heard just like, you're like, talking while thinking about.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm usually doing that, it's a bad habit, but I think about something else to talk about.
Isn't that weird how your brain can do that?
Yeah, it is weird.
How you can just like, talk, but also be like, not even knowing what you're saying, I mean, you know what you're saying?
No, I know what I'm saying.
I think since you've done it, you've done this for so long, that like, your brain is kinda like on autopilot, it's kinda like driving, like, you don't have to actively think about driving, you know?
I don't have to think about it as hard as I might, if it was like, something I just learned yesterday or something. Anyway, let's not get off the topic here, but, um, so, it, it, all these transcription factors, and I told, I, I made a big point of that, that there's more transcription factors than any other kind of protein, right?
Uh huh.
So this should, this should give you a clue that this is a very complex topic. Um, and, I mean, when you consider there's like about eight or nine hundred different G protein couple receptors, you know? Trap, I mean, there's, there's so many, so many transcription factors to regulate, we just take all the complexity of our bodies for granted, totally for granted. You know, you don't think anything of it at all. Uh, but it's just like, so much encoded in those transcription factors, making the right genes turn on at the right times. Um, and then that brings you to the next topic, which is cis regulatory modules, right? As you say it over and over again.
I did, so my understanding is that cis.
I can totally see you asking on exam, what does D R M stand for?
Cis are on the same ones, same chromosomes, and trans are on separate chromosomes.
Yeah.
But, but they're both relatively close, otherwise they went to war.
Well, no, not both, but cis is, cis is relatively close, trans can be anywhere.
Okay, trans can be anywhere.
The only sense, sense in which it must be close is it must be somewhere within the same nucleus.
Trans must be somewhere within the same nucleus?
Yeah, that's just, goes with that saying.
I thought it was on a whole other chromosome.
I mean, that means that, that all I'm saying is, well, yeah, it is on the chromosomes. All I'm saying is like, my genes can't be regulated by, by trans factors from your genome.
Oh, okay.
Just to be inside the same nucleus.
Okay.
What's, so you know how, um, with uh, the DNA, double stranded, double stranded DNA and the RNA polymerase attaches, you have all those um, transcription factors and everything?
What's, are, are we ignoring you completely here?
No, no, I asked you any questions.
I'm like, listening to everything, I actually have to go.
Okay. Oh, well.
Yeah, she's like.
I hope she's, you know, okay.
Are you worried about yourself?
Um, sort of, I just I'm doing my best.
I was talking before.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, cuz I'm, I don't wanna deal with that anymore.
Um, I kinda just like, had questions on everything, so like anything else like, talked about here today, actually, and like, she helped me a lot with the heart, like, she kind of explained.
Well, we, we helped each other.
Yeah, 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 so, um, I'm just, anything, I have to go, but thank you.
Yeah, see you. Yeah.
Okay, so, so where were we then?
So we're talking about DNA and the transcription factors, and they have all, all the things in it, oh, there, why is it, why is it bold again? Like, what's the, so purpose is to get all the transcription factors, have the activator to activate it?
Okay, here you have the promoter again, and you have RNA polymerase, and you have the basal factors, basal transcription factors that are engaging with it from the start, to form this whole enzyme or transcription complex of proteins, allowing one to this promoter. Just the way that those can come in and bind. Transcription factors that are bound somewhere else can actually bind to that too, if the DNA bends, and they can bind to it too.
Well, what's the point of it all bending in the first place, that's my.
So they can get over there, if they get.
Yeah, but what's the point, like, why do they wanna get over there in the first place?
Because when they bind to it, that is part of what is required to make it initiate transcription.
Okay, there we go, all right, that's, that's what I said, it's just, just make everything start, yeah, okay, sorry.
Okay.
That is the direct effect on your like, list of two there, like, see, there is the direct effect and a spreading effect. The direct effect is when the DNA binds, bends, DNA bends, and then they.
These are, yeah, you see, this is why, like, I ask questions, I already know the answer to, it's just.
Direct, direct affected bending?
Yeah, that's when, when the DNA bends, and then transcription factors that are bound to a cis regulatory module come around.
And then the spreading effect is there's no bending, it's just like, like you said, it's a domino effect.
Yeah, it's just like, the, 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 a little enzyme proceeds along the uh,
Meaningless DNA.
And it's making changes as it goes, and finally, it makes those changes all the way across this region, and that has an effect on the uh, ability of the um, promoter to initiate transcription.
Okay.
So wait, is positive auto-regulation like a positive feedback loop?
You, you're asking me, is it like it?
Yeah.
Uh, in a way it is, yeah, because, because the uh, thing has been, a gene has been turned on. And then his product is actually a transcription factor, and it has a, a enhancer uh, to which that transcription factor will bind, which keeps that thing turned on.
Right, just like one thing turn, another thing turns on to another thing, that just keeps going, until one thing shuts off, and it all shuts off.
Well, that thing should theoretically continue to be on forever, because the product that it makes has a way to turn it on. But it could be shut off if there's also a silencer type binding site there, that other transcription scan factors can bind to, that, that are repressors. So it can be shut down that way, but otherwise, if they weren't for that, it would just go for others.
And what are dimers?
Dimmers?
D I M E R.
Oh, dimers.
Dimers.
Dimers, yeah. A dimer is two units.
That come together and bind unit DNA.
So like, if you remember, if you remember sugars, uh, uh, supros is a diamond, supros is a, is a.
So it's just two units of whatever that.
Well, yeah, cuz you can have the helix, loop helix, you can have the zinc fingers, you can have the leucine zipper, these are just, you have the, these are all like, different types of proteins that come to, so they, they're, they're just, they're just be able for them to bind onto the DNA in the first place, is um, is to, they have to be a dimer.
So the helix loop.
They don't always have to be done.
Okay, but.
But that's, that's a very typical mode.
I think I asked you that, yeah, I asked you that, actually, if they needed to always be dimers.
So dimers are just, dimers are just two units coming together, like the helix, like the helix loop helix, the lens and zipper, the homo domain protein zinc fingers, and, but those are also common types of trans.
Translation factors.
Translation factors.
Those are also.
Common types of.
Common types, yeah, of transcription factors.
And what are zinc fingers? They're, they're, they're balanced.
Zinc finger is actually a structural motif, a structural, a structural component of many proteins, not just transcription factors. But, but it's in, there are transcription factors that have a zinc finger motif, and then it has a little, a little spiral or uh, alpha helix that can get down in major grooves in a usual way, and they also can dimmerize and stuff like that, and it's just, you can have zinc fingers in uh, in lots of proteins, just like you can have an alpha helix in other proteins, not just, it's not only transcription factors that have alpha helixes. Alpha helixes occur in many proteins.
What's their purpose?
That's what?
What's the purpose of the zinc finger?
That is a way to make a little kind of structured, little, little uh, kink in DNA that can help you achieve the overall shape of the DNA, what did I say, DNA, it's, it's a, a feature of protein that, that forms a kink.
Shape, okay.
That, that can help you achieve the uh.
So it's like quaternary?
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, you could, no, it's not quaternary, it's, it's, if you wanna classify it, there's some way, you'd have to call it uh, you call, have to call it tertiary.
Tertiary, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's not the backbone, and it's not two proteins, it's like, within a protein, it forms this kink. It's like a, it's, 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 you know, the only thing that we've talked about before that's like, is a a uh, disulfide bridge.
Okay.
In a way.
It helps achieve folding, folding.
Yeah, there, there are various kinds of things that happen in proteins to help them achieve the peculiar shape that they need to have. And it's just in one more shape that you can put in, it's like, you build proteins, like having a box of toys go together in all sorts of shapes, and you build on any kind of shape you wanted, the zinc finger is one component you can put in there to hold that little kink right there, and, and it's useful in transcription factors, cuz it can be right there, that you have a little coating in that uh, alpha helix, and then that's sort of the core of the transcription factors.
I'm gonna turn off the zoom, so I just.
Can you see how many people are attending?
No, no one came.